As the Chair of the Hana Advisory Committee to the Maui Planning Commission, I hereby call the meeting to order December 17th, 2024 at 4:40 PM.
Yeah.
And would like to just ask the Department to just go ahead and let us know how you'd like to proceed with the agenda. And actually, before that, or maybe Corporation Council can advise on this, but we do have a letter we received from John Blumer Buell, which is requesting that I recuse myself from this matter. So I wanted to, before we proceed any further, I wanted to just address that and see if there's anything that we need to do to, if there's anything we need to do to address that. If I could ask Corporation Council for guidance on that.
Okay, sure. I'm here. So you're saying that somebody, somebody asked you to recuse yourself from?
Yes, we have a letter from John Blumer Buell that says, "I request current Hana Advisory Committee to the Maui Planning Commission Chair, Scott Crawford, recuse himself from this matter." And then he lists some reasons why he feels that should be necessary. So I can address those if you like me to, but I'm just not sure what the proper process is for this.
Okay. Did you do the roll call and everything first though?
Oh, okay. Let's start with the roll call. Yeah, sorry. Uh, so, a member, or let's start with the Vice Chair Clayton Corvallo. Did he disappear again? Shoot. Well, then let's go to Member Mardfin.
Here.
Member Keely. Matt. He's on mute. But he's here. Can you unmute yourself?
Yeah, we did.
Okay. And uh, Member Becky Lind.
Here.
Okay, so right now we have a quorum of four and hopefully Clayton Corvallo will rejoin shortly, but um, okay, so that's our roll call. There I see him. Clayton, we're doing roll call. Are you here?
I am here in Hana at home and no one else is in the room with me.
Oh yeah, I forgot I was supposed to ask that of the others too. Ward, where are you? Who else is with you? Ward?
You guys have, you guys have to talk about who's with you.
Nobody else is with me. I'm here alone at 4196 Hana Highway.
Becky?
I'm also alone and I am all the way out in Makawau right now.
Wow. And Matt?
I mean, I'm at the Council Services Office with me.
Okay, and I am at my residence in Hana and there's no one else here. All right.
Great.
Is that good for the roll call?
Yeah. So then Chair, you said someone wanted you to recuse yourself from this, right?
Yes.
And, and that's from the discussing the resolution 24-138?
Yes.
And then, sorry, I didn't get a copy of that, that letter. Maybe it came in later and I didn't update myself, but what was the basis?
Just sent in today. So rather than reading it, can I forward this to you?
Cody, I forwarded the email to you.
It's from John Blumer Buell.
Okay, let me look at my email. Hold on.
And then in the last paragraph of his two-page letter, he has a request for me to recuse myself.
Okay.
Scott, this is Ward. Can you tell me in general what basis he had for requesting this?
Well, I mean, I'd rather refer to his specific language than trying to paraphrase or generalize it.
Okay.
What, once Cody has it in front of her, then maybe I can read it and then we can read it into the record, or maybe you could read it into the record.
Sure. Okay, I'm gonna This is a letter from John Blumer Buell, right?
Yes.
Okay, so he's saying, "Aloha Maui Planning Director Blystone Planner W. Layal Amnai, Consultant William Spence, Hana Advisor Committee to the Maui Planning Commission members, Council Representative Shane Sinansi in Hana, Council Staff Member Mavis Maderos." I'm gonna skip down a little. "I have repeatedly over the years asked Clayton Yoshida to put me on a permanent mailing list and to send me the email for each member of the Hana Advisory Committee to the Maui Planning Commission. Clayton understood the request. I worked with him over decades and was a three-term member of the Hana Advisory Committee to the Maui Planning Commission. First, I request a contested case hearing regarding the subject item." Right, that's not okay.
Maybe if you can just finish reading the whole letter and then we'll go back and address these points one at a time.
Okay. "Second, I request deferral of this matter until the Hana community is adequately noticed and informed with an accurate historical record. The current Department of Planning Report and Recommendation, December 17th, 2024 Meeting Report is inaccurate, uninformed, and biased. Third, I request current Hana Advisory Committee to the Maui Planning Commission Chair Scott Crawford recuse himself from this matter. His past employment and associations with convicted criminal Jay Kalani English in matters involving the Hana Community Health Center, Hana Health, Dr. Curtis Beacom, the late Michael Ammas, and others creates a clear conflict of interest. Some of the matters are still under investigation. Other matters may be under appeal in the courts." And that's, that's all he said.
Okay. So thank you. Can we, I guess, address these points in order? He requests a contested case hearing on the subject item. Is there any such thing as a contested case hearing in the procedures of the Hana Advisory Committee?
You know, I, I really don't think you need to address that right now, Chair. Honestly, just, I, I think just the third thing where he's asking you to recuse yourself from, from the matter is just saying that you have past employment and associations with Jay Kalani English. So, I mean, unless you see something that I don't see on here, um, I, I don't, I think the only thing to address would be what you said at the beginning, which is whether you're gonna not take part in a meeting on the first item on the agenda for discussion.
Okay. Um, so would you like me to just address my?
If you're, if you're comfortable, if you are comfortable, can we not?
Yeah, so what I will say is that I don't have any personal financial or other interest in the Hana Health Center or this matter other than being a client. And that as far as these other matters that he raises, I don't see how they're relevant to this topic item or have any, or, or create any conflict of interest. So I, based on that, I will not recuse myself.
Okay, I think the financial thing is the most important point there. And you're saying that you're representing that you don't have any financial interest aside from being a client, right?
Correct.
So I, I think you could participate.
Okay, thank you. With that, we will proceed. Becky?
Um, full disclosure, I am also a client of Hana Health and, you know, if that means you have to recu, like, that means we all have to, I don't know. I just thought I'd put that out there.
Yeah, I don't think that being a client means we have to recuse. We don't have a personal financial interest in that we can benefit from this decision, so.
Okay.
One way or the other. Ward?
I'll add to the pile. Two things. The only thing I do at Hana Health is get an annual COVID shot vaccine. I don't get my flu shots here. I don't get anything. I used to do dental work. I don't do that there anymore. I will add one more. Kalani English was one of my students at Hawaii Law College when he was a student there.
It's really not relevant, Ward. You don't need to go into it any further.
Yeah, really.
Okay. Chair? Uh, Clayton first?
Go ahead.
You're muted. Unmute yourself.
Sorry about that. Just bringing up his original point, did, if it's valid or not, about whether people had a valid ample notice of this application, you know, neighbors and
Oh, I'll just ask the, well, yeah, I'll just ask the question, was proper legal notice of this meeting provided?
I believe so. Shan, who is on the, on the meeting, she is the one who put out the notices. And I think that as far as I know, she did it timely unless she can tell us otherwise.
Chair?
This is, yeah, this is Wilton, the planner. Yeah, we complied with this 19.68 regarding DBAs, the notice requirements in 19.68.
Okay, thank you very much. So unless there's some specific evidence brought forward that that wasn't the case, then we will proceed with this matter. With all members participating.
Chair?
Yeah, Matt?
Hey, I'm a, I'm a patient. I go to the dentist there and occasionally to think I don't want to go to Kaiser IV. But I'm also a, I'm also a neighbor. So I just want to make that known to everyone.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Now we lost your camera.
Well, what did?
He's still on. He's still on.
I'm still on. We got it here.
We can't see you. There we go. Now you're back. Okay.
Okay, he's delayed.
All right. And with that, unless there's other, any other procedural matters that the members or the department would like to raise or the Corporation Council, then I think we would like to turn it over to the Department to proceed with the agenda.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, Members of the Hana Advisory Committee. Just a few housekeeping notes. I don't think we're gonna have this issue, but we always do this at every meeting. If you're observing this meeting and you're not a member, please turn off your camera and mute your mics until you are testifying or presenting. Moving along, first item and only item of the agenda is a public hearing. And this is Director Kate Blystone, Planning Director, Transmitting Council Resolution 24-138, referring to the Maui Planning Commission, a bill to amend the state land use district classification from ag district to rural district. And this is for the Hana Health Center. And the planner assigned to this project is Wilton Layal Amnai, and I'll hand it over to him. Thank you, Chair.
And actually, before we go to Wilton, can we just, I'd like to, if there is anybody from the public who would like to testify on this matter before the presentation, like if somebody has, you know, needs to leave or something, I'd like to just open it up for presentations or for testimony. So if there's anybody from the public who would like to testify prior to the presentation, please make it known at this time.
No one?
Hearing none?
District office.
Okay, thank you, Mavis.
There's nobody.
I do see someone, I do see someone that says is labeled as testifier on there.
Noi?
On the Sorry.
Noi? Uh, you're muted.
Hi, it's Noi. I'm actually in Kipahuulu and I'm thankful that I can get Wi-Fi right now, but I'm not sure how long that Wi-Fi will last.
Okay, so if you'd like to testify, the testimony is limited to three minutes with 30 seconds to conclude.
All right. Well, I am in, I am in support of Hana Health and for the, the change from, from ag to rural district. Well, not only am I a resident, but I also benefit from Hana Health, but I also think that it's a positive change that's, that will benefit our community in the long run. Um, and so pretty much that's kind of all that I have to share. I mean, I, I am in support of it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the members for the testifier? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Noi.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to testify before the presentation?
Hi, Chair. This is Chantel. I see no one else wishing to testify online.
Okay, thank you, Chantel. Wilton, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair. It's good to be with you today. This matters before the committee as a result of a council-initiated resolution adopted as Resolution 24-138 FD1. This item is under your view because the project is located in the Hana region. A conditional district boundary amendment or DBA request is to change the classification from agriculture to rural district for 9.501 acres triggers the need for advisory review. The purpose of this request is to enable the construction of six workforce, workforce housing units and a specialty clinic. The location of the project is in the state agricultural district, a district that does not allow such housing or new clinic. Amending the portion of the property from state agricultural district to state rural district will allow both facilities to be constructed. Details of the project will be explained further by the applicant, Will Spence, on behalf of Hana Health. And if it's okay with Chair, I'll turn the time over to him.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Spence.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Good evening, Members. It's nice to be with you again. I'll go ahead and share my screen. Let's see. I'll do that and I'll go into presentation mode. Okay, is that? I'm assuming that works for everybody. This takes up two screens for me. So. Okay, so.
I'm seeing your whole, your whole desktop and not, it's not in presentation mode.
Oh goodness. Okay. I mean, you're seeing the two screens that I have gone?
No, I only see one screen, but I see your, like, slides on the left and your notes on the right instead of just seeing the, what's in the center. And I see your menus and everything at the top, so.
Yeah.
This can work, but it's, I think.
I know. It's a bummer. It's in presentation mode now.
Okay.
Let's see.
Well, I think we can see it fine. So if you want to proceed, that's, that's fine.
Okay. Then let me get out of that. Bummer. Okay, so anyway, Wilton introduced the project. This is for a district boundary amendment for Hana Health, so they can make improvements to the property, building six workforce housings and housing units for Hana Health employees as well as opening up another clinic, specialty clinic. This did go to the county council initiated this because they felt an urgency to get this going. They do this from time to time when they see a very clear public benefit. The goal to change the, the state district, and I think everybody knows you have multiple layers of things in our permitting, you know, our permitting procedures. Uh, this one just deals with the state from agriculture to rural, and it's only a nine and a half acres of a 10-acre site. The timing of this is very important. Right now, Hana Health has $2 million in federal grants. The, the first grant is for planning, the second grant is for construction. The, the planning grant is what we're into right now, going through this process, getting architects on, on board, getting grading permits, building permits, et cetera. That's set to expire in the fall of 2025. If we can't get so many of these things in place, including this district boundary amendment, the second grant is in jeopardy of being lost. If you don't, you know, if you don't have permission to build, then why would you reserve funds for construction? So the timing of this is very important. Regional location, I think everybody knows where it is. It's the existing Hana Health Center, the police station, and then what, so we're talking about the property behind. Backwards. Little bit closer view. Again, here's the existing center. Uh, and the project is gonna go on this property in the back. Two parts to the project. This would be six workforce housing units for Hana Health employees, two studios, about 500 square foot each, two, two-bedroom units, about 750 square feet each, three, three-bedroom units, approximately 1,100 square feet each. And these are, you know, you guys are more familiar with the dire need for housing out in Hana than I am. So, you know, I, I trust you're very familiar with that. I, over the years, I just keep hearing stories about how you can't keep a doctor, you can't keep nurses, can't, you know, keep your employees long term. So this is a very important aspect of this project. The second part is a specialty clinic. What they want to do is bring new services to Hana with OB-GYN, cardiology, dermatology, and pediatric dentistry. It's not a big building, it's 1,900 square feet, but it'll have exam rooms, a small lab, restrooms, reception area, and office. This is the site plan. Um, this is a little different than what you saw in the exhibits to your staff report. I had inadvertently put in a different, an earlier version of the site plan, and so this is the correct one.
Oh my god.
The, at the bottom right here is the existing clinic, and then the colored buildings, the kind of brownish ones are the, uh, the residences, and then colored in blue are the, is the new specialty clinic. You notice a couple other things about this. The, the greenhouses are staying, and this agricultural area right here, it may change a little bit, but that's, that productive area is also changing. It's just within this area, and that, the agriculture that's right there right now is gonna move up the hill. They're not gonna move, lose any agricultural activities. There's the, the floor plan. You have an entrance with a lobby, reception, small office, several exam rooms, a lab, dentistry, et cetera. Couple photographs. I think everybody's familiar with this and the Halekuola. And then behind those buildings is the project site. So on the left, this is a production area that's going to pretty much stay the way that it is. On the right-hand side is where the project is gonna go. And then this is, this shows better where, where the housing and the clinic are gonna go. And again, these greenhouses are going to stay. Uh, right now, they're growing Dryland Callow, and I don't think I've ever seen so many wine chili peppers in my life. I was really amazed, actually. And then a view of inside one of the greenhouses. So I'm gonna show you a couple maps. One is the state district, showing the existing clinic is in, within the state rural district. That district allows public quasi-public uses, uses that have a public benefit, like schools, churches, hospitals, clinics, those kinds of things. And so in order to, to build a new clinic and the housing, this area over here, the larger area of the site, has to be changed to rural as well. The property is consistent with the Maui Island Plan, rural growth boundary. See, you can see at the lower left here, it's within the rural growth boundary. Your Hana Community Plan also designates the property for public quasi-public uses. And then the county zoning, it's a little bit like the rural, that it, it allows public quasi-public uses as well as the housing that's being proposed here. A few environmental maps. We are outside the special management area. We are not subject to any flood zones. We are well outside of even this extreme tsunami area. And we are also not subject to sea level rise. We're at about 140, 150 feet elevation, so none of these, at least the coastal hazards, would have any effect on the property. And then the last thing, this is also in the Maui Island Plan, they have these protected areas that are either have some special designation or have hazardous soils or very sloped topography. And these are not, our property is not in any one of those either. And with that, I did say it was gonna be short, so we are pal.
Okay, thank you, Will. Members, any questions? Becky?
Hi. Um, yeah, thank you. I just, first, I want to say how wonderful it is that there's additional housing plans and, and services for the Hana community. Thank you for your presentation. I have three questions. The first question, what is the?
Actually, Becky, let me just interrupt your real question. Say, after the member questions, then we'll take testimony from the public, but, but go ahead and ask.
Sure. Um, okay. My first question is, what is the property's current use and is anyone occupying those lands?
Okay, the property is, it's being farmed. There, there's a couple of houses closer to the, to the one clinic, but I, I don't, those aren't on the property. But the property is just being farmed, both in the area where the project's gonna go and also Malka up there. And it's all organic.
Um, and just is it, would it displace any, um, current activities or occupants?
It would. It's going to displace some of the farming, but it's not going, but that use is going to just go further up the hill. So that kalo that you saw as well as the chili peppers, that's, that's just going to be moved.
Okay. Um, second question, and maybe this is for the, um, the, the, uh, the, the staff, the planning staff. Is it possible to request for the housing that, that we can suggest a condition for priority for Hana residents? I know in the past we've, we've seen the clinic, um, employ lots of people from, and, and, and sometimes we, you know, Hana Community does not have, um, people qualified for those positions, but is it possible to, suggest that condition that it would be, the housing would be, um, that we could have a condition for priority for the Hana residents?
Yeah, I think that's a staff question.
Yeah, staff question.
Yeah, for this is, you can place conditions on, on it. I'm not sure exactly if that, how that would be worded. Prioritize, but I know that under workforce housing in general, it'd be governed by 2.96 of the code. And that's, Danny, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I, I think the, the Hana Advisory Committee can recommend, um, that the Maui Planning Commission recommend to the Maui County Council because that's ultimately who would approve this. Um, you know, we can make a, a condition that's relatively vague, just because I don't want to get into, you know, discrimination type of thing, but something to the extent of maybe like, to the extent practicable, the housing provided shall give preference to Hana residents or something along those lines where, um, I think we get the point across, but not put ourselves in any type of legal trouble. So we can suggest.
Thank you. Um, my last question, um, is about the OBGYN services because I was one of those Hupai mamas that had to drive across the island all the time to, um, would that include birth? Um, could we birth in Hana? I mean, not me, but you know, just, just curious what that in, in, involves. Is it just like prenatals or would it also involve possibility to birth in Hana? And maybe you don't have that info yet, but just, just something that popped in my brain was curious. That would have been really great 15 years ago.
I see Cheryl talking. She's muted. I don't hear anything.
Cheryl, I, you're, you're muted. Can we unmute Cheryl, please?
Pam shaking her head no.
Was that no to not being muted or no to no birth processes? May, maybe you can type a response? Is that possible in, in, in the chat? Okay.
Are we, uh, let's see. Are we waiting for a response on that or?
I see her writing something. Oh, she's going to give us a visual.
Oh, how high tech. Thumbs up.
Muted, not on computer. Okay. Um, it, it, thank you. It, and, and really it's, you know, any OBGYN would be, you know, awesome. It, if birth could be also included, if we could bring back Dr. Howell or, I don't know. It's just, it, it, it was a, it, it was a thing for when I was Hupai and I know a lot of women go through it. So, um, I definitely uh, love that that was on your list and advocate for those services to be expanded. Thank you. That's, that was my last question.
Yeah, it's cool.
Okay, thank you, Becky. Uh, any other questions from members? Remember Marv phone?
Let me just respond to Becky one second. I remember talking with Dr. Howell when he was here and he gave up delivering births here because of insurance issues. And that probably still exists. Now, my question. Will said that a lot of the problem is that this is a an urgency to this, and I'm just wondering why it took so long to get here. If this has been an issue about when the thing has to be done, why wasn't this brought to us six months or a year ago?
We thought we were on a fast track with all this and it turned out, um, some of the regulations weren't weren't what we thought they were. We thought we were going to another, uh, route in county code. And it turns out we're not. So we, we went ahead and filed the application. Planning staff has been great that they've processed it very quickly, but, uh, yeah. Yeah, we, it, it could have been earlier. It was still urgent then, just because this, you know, these planning processes take so long.
Um, yeah, the problem is that puts us under a bind that we didn't have, need to be under. I, I'd like to ask another question this time. Um, I'm trying to find this. This is in the exhibits. And there's one on G70. I'm just going to hold it up so you can see what I'm looking at.
Um, hang on.
And a few following pages.
Could you hold that up again? I was trying to find it while you were.
Here.
Yeah, okay. I got it.
That one and the next page, which is also in color. And on the next page, I see.
Right.
That thing.
That's the one I was mentioning that it was an earlier version. What I showed in the, in the PowerPoint was the correct version.
Okay, but this one that is in there that's incorrect, and it shows where a bunch of stuff is, is that the, that, that acreage we're talking about changing into rural?
Where we're talking about the entire property.
What is, what is the existing, um, clinic on?
That's on rural property. That's entire, that property is entirely rural.
And you're talking about moving some agriculture into rural?
Well, yeah, you can do agriculture in rural. That's an explicitly permitted use.
But that's not my, my, let me see if I can pull this up and point, thinking. The, in here is where you're wanting to change to.
They, the, the entire property is going to be rural.
But some of it's already rural.
No, that's the existing, well, just a little piece of it, and the existing clinic is rural. Okay, you have a map in there too that shows that it's exhibit four. And it's a really simplified, it's just green and blue with the little, with a couple labels.
Okay. So the blue is already rural.
Correct.
Green is what you want to green A is agriculture district and that's the part you want to turn. Plus you want stuff more Mauna. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's good. That entire property outlined in the lighter shade of blue. It's about 10 acres that would change.
I have another question, but Scott, if you want to go onto somebody else, I can wait.
Uh, any other members have questions? Uh, Matt? Got to unmute. Okay.
You go. Mr. Spence, this, this property, or should we maybe ask the planners? This property was originally, uh, was purchased by the state from the McDonald family?
I'm not sure where they purchased it is from, but it is state property.
Okay, yeah, I believe, I believe that's a, that's where it happened. So is there any way that, from where the property goes, goes Mexico? Throw a line across there to the, uh, the countryside boundary? And, 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 and
Yeah.
Mauna section and the Makai section. Would that take too much time?
That, if I, if I have your question correct, why are, why change the entire property?
Yes, exactly. I'm, I'm a farmer and I, I, I'd hate to see Ed property go to anything other than agriculture.
Well, okay, her question.
I'm in favor. I believe this benefits the community and I'm in favor.
We're not, we're not going to be losing any agricultural activity with this. What's, what's on the project site is just going to move.
That, that, I, I understand that, but
Okay.
What about 10, 10 years from now? You know, what's going to, what's going to be the next thing?
I don't know. We'd have to come back to the community.
I don't know either. So, uh, you don't need, you don't need all that. You don't need that to be changed now. Maybe you could come, come again in 10 years if you need, if you need more land or whatever. And I'd also like to see, uh, on Becky's point, not so much local, um, the, the housing is going to be for like medical professionals?
Or just Hana Health employees. Hana Health employees. Not necessarily professionals.
Could be ag workers as well?
We have a separate, this is Cheryl. I think we find her. I mean, can you hear us?
Yes.
Yes, Cheryl, go ahead.
Good. Yeah, it, it is for Hana Health employees. It could be ag workers, although we have a separate project for agricultural housing that's located on a different piece of property on the back 30. Um, it is for, the two studios particularly are going to be for traveling uh, specialists who come in for two or three days and then leave Hana. The other units are for people who are working in the clinic, including professionals, whether it's accounting staff or physicians or social workers, whoever we happen to be hiring. Um, I think people need to understand that we're spending close to $100,000 a year subsidizing housing out in the community for our staff right now. That is money that would be much better spent on services to the community rather than, uh, landlords that we're paying right now. So, yeah, I don't know if that's answering your question. But that's sort of the situation we're in right now is we're having to rent all over Hana and we're paying a lot of money for these, these homes.
And Cheryl, can you just, um, for the record, identify yourself and your position?
Yes, I'm Cheryl Vasconcellos, the Executive Director of Hana Health.
Thank you.
Can I answer Becky now? Becky, we can't do deliveries in Hana and it's far more than insurance. It has to do with volume and, uh, OBs need to be able to deliver a certain amount of babies in order to be qualified. And we'll never reach that threshold, um, given our population. So unfortunately, no. Um, but we're hoping to at least do prenatal care. Now, we've been trying to do prenatal care for 25 years. And the problem is the physicians on the other side of the island refuse to deliver children that they have not provided the prenatal services for. This has been a longstanding battle that we, we've worked, tried to work with everybody and there's been no interest and it has to do with how insurance companies pay for services. They, they pay globally. So if they're not doing all of it, they don't get paid the way they would if, if they did everything, um, if you separate out the delivery. And Maui overall right now has no OBGYNs. Women are actually going to Oahu to deliver. And so even find that, we brought somebody in, um, we have an OB who's doing once a month right now. She was delivering babies. Her practice stopped. They won't do it anymore because they couldn't handle all of the overflow from the other, for the, from the lack of OBGYNs in the community. So it's a tough, it's a tough situation islandwide. Sorry.
I mean, it's not for me. I'm done, but you know, the, the next, the next gen, I mean, I really appreciate you advocating for it, uh, and you know, it, I just remember it being really difficult to take that highway when you're have, you got the morning sickness and you got all of the the bills and everything and it would be wonderful if we could do prenatal services in Hana. So thank you so much for-
I agree, I agree. We're trying. We can at least get you through the first trimester, but after that, the doctors won't deal with it. So, yeah.
I understand. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Cheryl. Um, any other questions from the members? Uh, Ward?
Yeah, um, talking about the housing.
Yes.
Is that going to be rental housing?
We can't charge rent on state property. It's a, it's against the lease. So that would have to be part of a compensation package. The state that, on state leased land, they don't allow you to sublease to anybody, including renting housing to, um,
And they're not going to be sales. They're not going to be sold to somebody.
Oh, absolutely not. We don't, we don't own the land. The state of Hawaii owns the land and so you can't sell the property.
You know, you know how educators are handled here? In the long houses and the short houses?
Yeah, I'm familiar.
They pay, I, I was in the long house for a year and we paid, we paid for our housing. I don't know what kind, what the underlying land was, but since it, I'm guessing it was state land. And, but there were limits on how long you could stay. Are you planning on having limits on how long any given say physician would be able to stay in these houses?
There wouldn't be any limits. My guess is at some point the people who are living in those homes are going to want to have their own home and not be on the health center campus. But we would not, the organization would not timeframe that you have to be out in a year or find something else in a year. They could stay as long as they're employed.
Yeah, we had three years, I think, and some people went up to five.
Yeah.
That's that question.
Any other questions from the members? Becky?
Okay, last one. Um, and this is mostly towards my, my, my fellow committee members. Do, do you guys know who's, who's, uh, earlier they said that somebody was, or some farmers would be displaced by this? Do you know who's up there? What, 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 what they're farming? Who they're, who? Who or what? Do you guys know any of them? No?
We're doing, those are, that, the farming on that property, it, we're doing the, Hana Health does the farming. And so it's our employees who do the farming.
Okay, there's not other residents currently occupying the land?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Becky. Any other questions from the members? Ward?
Uh, yeah. This, there was a line in the report that said, is mentioned in the property history. Healthcare facility plans were developed in 2000 and 2004 for the property. But were never built. What was it that was planned and not built?
If you remember. This is going back more than 20 years. There were plans for a wellness village that included a lot of the services that we're trying to do now. And there was a lot of community opposition, even though the plan was based on community needs assessments and focus groups and surveys. There was a lot of opposition expressed at that time that it was too big, it was too much. And we didn't take it any further, so instead we, people are sorry now, I can tell you that, because a lot of the buildings and facilities we had would really meet community needs. But that's, that's water under the bridge at this point. So we're building what we can to meet the needs that we're still identifying and we're just having to go slow and do it a little bit at a time.
Can the plans that were approved in 2000 and 2004 be resurrected? Or are they filed again?
I don't think I can go through it again. That's asking me too much. I.
I guess I'm asking the planning department if they would consider them valid.
I, I don't, we didn't go for a permit at that point in time. We didn't, we were free permit, that was all planning, so. Um, there's nothing that the planning department would have to actually deal with at that point.
I should, if, if I may, Chair.
Yeah.
Yeah, Will?
Yeah, uh, like you said, Ward, all that stuff is kaput. The. You have to remember too, as state property, they have to approve anything that's built on it. There is, I mean, you have to go back to the land board for this particular project for final approval, once the district boundary amendments obtained. And they're going to, but if you wanted to build anything else, they're going to just go, okay, go back out. There, this isn't, you know, slam dunk anything. It's never slam dunk. So. You know, you need really explicit approval from the state to build anything on their property.
And that wasn't achieved, so it's gone. And the only thing that can be done is the things that are described in this report.
Correct.
That's all we're, that's all we're currently putting forward at this point in time.
That scares me. You have something else that you have planned after this?
Not on this property, no, we don't. But whatever, if, if in five years from now, we wanted to put senior housing, for example. That would have to go through the same processes that we're going through now. We would still need to go through county permit process, we would still need to go through, uh, Board of Land and Natural Resources, we would have to do all of that. So. It, it doesn't, it doesn't prevent us from having to continue to go through all of the processes that are required. But what you're dealing with now, we're only bringing forward the specialty clinic and workforce housing to you and to the Board of Land and Natural Resources. Anything else we want to put up, we still have to go through a process. But at this point, there is nothing else planned for that property.
Thank you. Thank you, Ward. Any other questions from the members?
I, I did want to say one more thing, not to belabor the point, but because time is of the essence, we actually started this process three years ago. We did not just bring this forward in the last few months. We've been working diligently to get through all the approvals and this turned out to be something we were not expecting, um, the DBA, um, and that came up about a year or so ago, would you say? And we got on it right away. It's just now getting to you, but we've been working on this for months and months.
Okay, thank you, Cheryl. Um, if there's another, if there's no other questions from the members for now, Clayton? Uh, unmute yourself, please.
I just wanted to ask really quick about the specialty clinic and I know there's a lot of services needed. Would the applicant just say that, suggest that everything will just, these services will be on a rotating basis of need? You know, we, we, we do need, absolutely desperately need all of these things. But I'm just wondering how they were identified and if they will rotate and, uh, based on maybe like, maybe the people who are qualified to, you know, do these things.
It's going to be based on a few things. It's going to be based on our population that needs the services and how many people you need to keep a provider busy. And it's also based on being able to identify providers who are willing to come to Hana and provide services. Which is why we're looking at one building to do a variety of things. Pediatric dentistry right now. We're doing that in, in our current clinic two days a week. But in order to accommodate that, we have to displace our regular dentist two days so we can pay him for that time as well. So, this would be something that would definitely be in the new facility. And we think we'll be able to probably expand the number of days that the dentist is able to come out to, to see kids. Dermatology just started and that's only one day a month right now, but if we have a facility, it may grow. So we're trying to bring services in now based on the space that we currently have and based on the population. Dermatology is booked three months out right now. Uh, we just started two months ago, so. I'm thinking the, once we have more space and we have providers who are willing to commit more time to Hana, that we'll see some growth in those areas. But yes, overall, it's going to be rotating.
Thank, thank you. That was the only question I had, uh, Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Clayton. I see one more question from Ward.
Uh, this is for Will. Um, on page 14 of the report, Hana Community Plan. You mentioned it's notable that hospitals often have housing for employees. Do you have any example of that in, in the state of Hawaii?
Maui Memorial.
Maui Memorial has housing for their physicians?
Yes, they do.
Is it a lot?
Is it what?
A lot of people?
Oh. I don't, I don't know, I've never asked. I've just spoken to several physicians there at the hospital and, yeah, they're, you know, they're on a rotating basis as well, at least some of them are. And, uh, they spoke about their housing as part of their compensation.
Okay, thank you.
Some babes.
Sure.
That?
So, talking to Mavis.
Oh, okay. Um, well, I want to open it up for public testimony again for anybody else and we'll, if the members have, we'll, we'll open it up for members' questions one more time before we move forward, but, um, just want to see if there's anybody else from the public who would like to provide testimony at this time. Please, uh. Make yourself known.
Hi Chair, this is Chantel. I see no one online wishing to testify.
Okay, thank you, Chantel.
Hana District Office.
Thank you, Mavis. You beat me to the question. So, uh, with that, um, I'd like to go ahead and move to open it for, um, discussion among the members or if a member would like to make a motion, um, that we could, uh, have on the floor for the sake of discussion.
Aloha.
Becky?
Hi. Yeah, uh, I, um, love that we can expand services, this proposal for, um, expanded services and I love the, um, the, you know, housing is, is, is really critical, um. If we could put that condition that if there is somebody qualified in the Hana community to, you know, somehow have priority, that I think that could be really wonderful. So that's, that's my two cents.
Thank you, Becky. Would it, um, be uh, agreeable to the applicant and the department and the members if we had some language to, um, along the lines of, to the extent practical, while serving the staffing needs of the center, priority for housing shall be given to Hana residents?
Yeah, I'm not opposed to that. I mean, that, that's always been our priority.
Excellent.
Okay, any other, um, any other discussion from the members or would like, somebody like to make a motion? Becky?
Was that a motion?
I'm, oh, sorry, go, go Clay.
No, just asking if that was a motion you just made.
Oh yeah, no, I was about to, uh, like my, that was my, um, input and then now I would like to make the motion to, um, uh, add that language to it, um, kind of a, what is it, a, um, conditionally approve or sorry, can you, can you guys help me out? Do you guys know what I'm saying?
Yeah, and actually, let me, let me just back up for just a second. The options that we have before us are, the alternative is to defer the, the matter to another meeting date. To recommend approval with no conditions. To recommend approval with conditions. Or to recommend denial. The recommendation of the planning department is that the Hana Advisory Committee recommend approval of the state district boundary amendment subject to two conditions. Uh, and I won't read those all, but you have them in front of you that have to do with interfering or restraining farming operations. Um, and notification to productive developers or purchasers of land or interest in the petition area regarding the Hawaii Right to Farm Act. So those are the two recommendations that, um, the department is, uh, or the two conditions that the department is recommending. So, with that, we can add, uh, an additional condition and we can, um, you know, we, we have those choices. We can recommend approval with conditions adding that additional condition. If you'd like to make that motion.
Yes, I would like to make that motion.
Okay. So, just to restate it, uh, Member Lind has, has recommended or has made a motion to, uh, approve, um, to approve the application with the two conditions, um, suggested by the department. Along with a language, um, stated previously, uh, to the extent practical, while serving the staffing needs of the center, priority for housing shall be given to Hana residents. Is there a second for the motion?
Cheryl, a second.
Okay, a second by Member Cravio. Any further discussion on the motion?
I'd like to discuss it.
Yes, Matt?
Uh, no one ever answered my question, just that we could get this. Put a boundary in there with this rural designation. Cross that. I just, um.
Will, would you like to address that?
Yeah, I would be happy to. And I, I do recognize we never, we never finished that discussion. This is the state's, there's two things, two reasons for this. One, it's the state's preference that the whole property be in the, the changed into the rural district. They're the landowner. The second reason is, and I haven't done the calc's, but to get those six units, it's better that it's in the rural district rather than in the ag district. There's some. If it, if so much of that remains in the ag district, then you start getting into questions of, can you really do this? And you start getting into strange interpretations of law, so.
It's only, it would only be allowed two, two dwellings, right?
Well, that would be county zoning.
That's county? What about state is, I know county.
The state, the, the thing with the state is, um, the rural district would, would definitely provide four of the six units.
Right?
One per half acre.
Yes, okay. Okay, um. So, and then you're, you're saying you're going to leave the rest of the property. What percentage of the property are you going to be using in this above, like?
I haven't figured the percentage.
Three acres?
I'm not sure. But I will say, if there's like, like we said earlier, what Cheryl was saying earlier, if, if there's any other changes, you have to go back through this whole process and you have to come back to the community. So it's not like, it's not like something's just going to magically appear.
Any further development like other than agricultural use has to come before us again?
Correct.
Okay. I'm, I'm satisfied.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Ward?
You're welcome.
I, I, I like where the motion reads, if you see, Wilton, will you break down that third condition?
Pretty good.
Yeah, you, you're, you're a little choppy there. Can you please repeat yourself, Ward?
Yes, could either you or Wilton, you know, put into writing the third condition that Becky made? Before we vote.
I'll type it out.
Who, who said that?
Me, the Chair.
And Becky said she has to leave soon.
Yeah.
Sorry, I gotta pick up a kiddo from work. Ward, do you see, he just, uh, entered it into the chat. Do you see the language there?
No. It's in the chat under new messages.
Cancer. I see it.
To the extent practicable while serving the staff needs of the center, priority for housing shall be given to Hana residents. I'd make that.
That is the motion.
Let's, could you change that to qualified Hana residents?
Makes sense.
What qualified, what does that mean, qualified? Qualified based on what?
Yeah. Medical ability.
Staffing needs.
Well, that, that would serve the staffing needs. I mean, they might be administrative personnel, they might be, obviously, they're not going to hire them unless they're qualified.
You never know.
I, I think that's unnecessary, Ward, rather than, rather than amending the motion, can we, can we call for the vote while Becky's here? Any further discussion? All right. I'm going to go through, uh, roll call vote, um, uh, Member Cravio?
Um, aye.
Member Lind?
Aye.
Member Keely?
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
Member Mardfin?
Aye.
And as the Chair, I will vote in favor. That's five votes in favor and the motion carries. Thank you, uh, to the applicant and, uh, the, uh, planners for bringing this, uh, bringing this to us and working on this project to benefit our community. So.
And this, God, where does this go now? To the count, to the council?
To the Planning Commission and then from there it goes to the Council, I believe. That's correct. Yeah. Um, so that concludes, um, item B. Um, I'd like to move on to Agenda Item C, Director's Report.
Um, I, I, I'm so sorry, I'm going to have to exit. So I just wanna mahalo everybody and, um, I, I'm, I'm, I'm so honored to have taken part and, um, I will look forward to reading the minutes.
Okay, thank you, Becky. We still have.
Thank you.
Members, I have to leave as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Okay, we still have a quorum with four of us here, so, uh, we could move on to the Director's Report. Danny?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, so for the Director's Report, Item C1, um, we don't have any agenda items, um, so far, um, for any future meetings. Um, Chantel did give you folks a scheduled calendar for, uh, 2025. Just pull it up on my end real quick. So, uh, the scheduled meetings for next year are March 18th, June 17th, uh, September 16th and December 16th. So, um, unless anybody has an objection to that, um, that will be the official scheduled meeting dates for year 2025.
Can you just go through that one more time a little bit?
Uh, sure, Chair. Uh, so next year, 2025, um, the four scheduled meetings for the Hana Advisory Committee here are going to be on March 18th, June 17th, September 16th, and December 16th.
Okay. Anybody have any, um, you know, comments about this at that time? Yeah, go ahead, Ward.
Danny? And is this my last meeting or is it March 18th my last meeting?
I have to look. Chantel, do you happen to know when Ward's term ends?
I, yes, um, it ends March 31st, 2025. So March 18th would be your last meeting.
Thank you.
And I did just put it in the comments as well for the dates for the future meeting.
Okay, great, thank you. At this time, I don't have any conflict with any of those, so. Okay, anything else, Danny?
Uh, no, Chair, that was all.
Okay, so our next regular meeting date is March 18th, 2025 at 4:30 PM. And is there any, uh, any other matters before I adjourn, going once, going twice? And, meeting is hereby adjourned.